All right, as Chair of the North Hampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor's results of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical obligation to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are, A) providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the North Hampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to the contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone, 646-876-9923, and webinar ID 834-4114-0058, or by clicking on the following website address, which is on, let's see, a website. B) Providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting through Zoom or telephonic instructions, which have also been provided on the website of SAU21.org. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to live at public body during the meeting for the public access. Please call 673-688-103, or you know, I haven't had SAU21.org. D) During the meeting, the public is unable to access the meeting. Given public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be a very limited experience. The poll votes that are taking during this meeting are determined by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call, and then the meeting can be resumed. Each member states their presence, please, also states whether there's anyone in the room. We do during this meeting what is required under the regulations.
Mr. Chairman, you have something by your microphone that's keeping us from hearing you.
Yes, I apologize. Every once in a while, my fan kicks in, gets up in here. Now take a roll call vote, but I need to repeat the portion of what I said.
You're ready for roll call? Okay. Cindy Burke? Cindy, we do everything by roll call? That's the only way the Zoom picks up?
Yeah.
And then you just got to state whether anybody's in the room with you?
My puppies.
Okay, it's your present. So Greg Duffy?
Present and alone.
Mark Tavishian?
Present with kids.
Nermina Peterson?
Present with kids.
Anton Von Jest?
Present alone.
Cindy, I apologize for picking on you first. I should have had you.
Okay.
All right, I have the roll call taken.
Thank you. How is my audio at this point? Can you hear me okay?
Very fuzzy.
Okay. It will, it will subside and it should come back. It just might take a minute. So I'll, I'll speak louder. Okay, so at this point, we are finished the first pass through the budget, and we had some items and some questions that came out of that. Matt sent an email today, and Matt, do you want to take us through those questions? And if anyone has any questions on the answers, we could dig into that a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. Rhonda, can you give me access to share my screen, please? So the first item that, that was addressed at the last budget meeting was the cellphone stipend for the facilities manager. So I did look into that. We had not budgeted for, for that stipend in previous years. However, over the last couple of years, we have standardized that across the SAU, where we are offering a stipend to our facilities managers. They, they really should have always received one. They, they're always, it's always necessary to be able to reach them and be accessible at all times. So it's really important that they have that, that cellphone. And we are, we are starting to write it into their, their work agreements going forward. So, so that had not been budgeted, but we are proposing that we budget. That's $1,200 stipend, so $100 a month, you know, starting this, this year. So. Any questions in regard to that?
No, no questions, Matt. Sorry, in my haste to figure my tech problem out, I neglected to welcome Cindy Burke as the newest appointed member to our board. Many of you know Cindy, and she has graciously, she had graciously put her name in in an effort to help us through this sort of unexpected resignation. And we're really, I'm really excited to have her back with all her knowledge and a zero learning curve. So welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody.
Nice to see you, Cindy. Welcome. So the second item I want to address was also in facilities. We had proposed adding a floor stripper. The, the one that we had has reached end of life. It's broken. So we have been, as, as I mentioned last time, but for the, I'll repeat myself since Cindy's first time hearing this. We, we have been able to borrow Winnicott's floor stripper. I did get a little more information as to the usage. So Stu indicated that this really is a, over the summer, they're, they're using it almost daily. Because they do every single room. It's, it's really the primary job is the, or a big component of their summer work is stripping all those, those floors. And, and currently, they're utilizing kind of hand, you know, a hand machine and, and some pretty heavy chemicals. On a, on a side, we've also heard, on the municipal side as well. So from both the town and school side, there is some concern about some of the chemicals that, that are used in fourth floor stripping. So over the next, we're hearing there's probably going to be some regulations on those type of chemicals usage, you know, within the next five years. It's not really relevant to this, other than the fact that we do want to, by utilizing a floor stripper, we're reducing that, the use of those chemicals. But there, there, that is another component of this, is that we, we, you know, currently the hand machine where we need to use a heavy, use those chemicals. And it's also very time intensive. So a floor stripper, the, this floor stripper is really important. It's, it's the same model that Winnicott utilizes. So Stu was having difficulty finding a vendor that would, that rents these. Because that was a question as to whether we, we could potentially rent it out. He did talk to Next Gen, and they, they had rented one a couple of years ago. And it was at that, so a couple of years ago, it was $2,000 a month. So, you know, he's estimating that for the three months that he would need it, it'd be approximately $6,000. He feels very strongly that this is a really important purchase, just, just to be able to get that, that job done. It's, it's not sustainable borrowing the machine from Winnicott, that can't, you know, occur ongoing. So. So that's, that's where we stand on the floor stripper. And he is, and by the way, he is available if we want to ask him any questions in regard to this.
Hey, I mean, thanks for doing the research on that, Matt. The, from my perspective, knowing that we're going to get them back in two years and a third year would cost more to rent than to own. It makes sense to, to buy it. The only question I have, and this is really a curiosity question, the old one that's broken, is that like, you know, send it out to be recycled? What happens to that? What happens to it? Do we, can we get something for it from the manufacturer that we're buying the new one from?
Yeah, so I actually asked Stu about that. He, he is still kind of playing with it to try to, he, he's holding out hope that he might get some use out of it, like might somehow be able to rewire it or something. But I think we're going to have to dispose of it. So what we do is we look for market value, so we, we look to sell it. I don't think there's much of a market value because it's not functioning right now. But, but that would be the first step. Otherwise, we would just, we would dispose of it, you know, via trash.
Thanks.
Matt, what's the life expectancy on this item?
I think Stu said it's approximately, it's 10 years, I want to say. All right. So another facilities-related question was the painting. So it was noted that last year, we, we budgeted $18,000 for our annual painting, and this year, we're budgeting $15,000. And this is simply a reflection of the area that we're looking to paint. It's just, it's a smaller area. So I spoke to John and Stu about this, because John was more heavily involved in the painting plan. And it's, it's going to be downstairs from the elevator area down to the, the middle stairwell. It's that section, if you can picture it. But that was not, it was not a reflection of us just trying to reduce the amount. It was, it was, it just reflects the scope. Additionally, the automated flushers, it's not on a replacement cycle. It's, they are replaced when they're broken. So they're, they're about $200 each. We, they come in packs of four, as well as the sink automated faucet at $500 each in packs of four. And that was, I believe that was in the supplies account. So yeah, so you'll see, we, we increased the plumbing supplies about its five lines down by $1,000, because we are starting to see that more of those automated flushers are breaking. So that's an increase of $1,000.
Makes sense.
So for food service, the question was raised about the new silverware, so the usable utensils. So we did fully replenish those at the end of this past year, and we're not utilizing them or planning to use them this year. So we're in pretty good shape. And Paula did indicate that there, in the small wares, the, the replace, any, any replacement next year would come out of the, the small wares line item. Jump to that. So that would be the $250. If, if needed. So. All right. The last question before we get into staffing is technology. So. The question was posed as to whether we had sufficient funding for technology equipments to maintain our, our placement cycles. So this, this reflects the new technology plan. However, I did confirm with, with the Technology Committee that for the purposes of this budget, we did reduce the one light, line item slightly, because, because we're, again, we're trying to be as lean as possible and be as, as fiscally responsible. And we felt that we, you know, that, you know, we could probably, we would just defer that one year for our, our computers, our replacement cycle for our staff. So there is $10,000 that's not reflected in this account for our staff laptop replacement. That's, that's 10 laptops. So that's, that's per the replacement cycle in the technology plan. So they were thinking that they would defer it a year. However, to truly create or replace, like a, a more sustainable account. You know, we, we could increase this by $10,000 this year and then have less variance from year to year. I mean, it wouldn't be a significant variance. I think we could still work with it. But, you know, that, that is an extra $10,000 that we, it makes sense to add to this account.
Yeah, I personally, so thank you, Matt. Personally, I first thank you all for being as fiscally responsible as you have been in trying to kind of look to see where, where we can save. That said, we have a replacement cycle for a reason. Computers are important tools for our teachers to use. And if we have a, if we have a replacement cycle that we're comfortable with, I think we stick with it. And all we're doing by deferring it is increasing it next year. And then we're going to see a big swing, right? And then the question's going to be, well, why do we have to go up so much with our budget? So my, my opinion is, at the moment, to add the $10,000 back in.
Yeah, anyone else have any thoughts around this one?
I agree with Tom. Add it now, avoid the swings later.
I agree as well.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm in an agreement as well. I think mostly for, you know, there's a replacement schedule, and it just creates a bubble going through the system. And so if we're, if we're okay at the end of this, then, then I would propose adding the $10,000 back if we're super tight or have some other conversations, you know, maybe we can revisit. But let's finish up and see where we end up.
All right. Any, any other thoughts on this? Nancy, did you have a question? You're, you're on mute. Okay. We can't hear you. I, I'm the only one that can hear you because I'm next door. Why don't you come into my office and put on a mask and just ask your question?
I just want to make sure that we're changing both the admin and the school board proposal?
Oh, okay.
Right?
All right.
We're not going to show that as an interface, correct?
Gotcha.
And Bill wants to increase the recording secretary pay today, up to 125. I've got that information, too.
Okay.
I'm going to unplug and plug my thing in. Usually the audio comes back.
I'll, I'll, I'll close them up.
So that's all. I just want to make sure it's not an increase by now.
So Nancy just wanted to pose a question as far as, do we, do we want this to be an administration-proposed change or a school board-proposed change on the budget? We can do either one, so it's, I'll leave that to the board to decide.
What's, I'm not, what are the implications? Are there any?
So it just, so when the budget, so if you look at this page, Administration Proposal, it'll show, like, right now, it shows the Administration Proposed 78, and then the School Board will reflect showing an increase of 10,000 to 88. Or the administration, or it can be adjusted to show the Administration Proposed 88. It's more just optics, as far as whether you might to be a board change or an administration.
I, I heard you make the recommendation, Matt.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. I'm, it, whichever way we'll go with, I'm sure. I'm just, if there's an implication, if it comes from the school board that the administration didn't think it through thoroughly, like, let's do what is the best optically.
All right, I think it probably makes sense to come from the administration, so, from an optics standpoint. Thank you. The other item is our recording secretary. We, so that's under Board of Education, I believe. So we are proposed, so we are currently paying our recording secretary a different rate in every single district. So we're proposing a late proposal, my apologies, adjusting that rate to 125. So I, across the entire SAU. So that would reflect in a change of
$180.
An $180 increase on this page.
That shouldn't be your apology, Matt. That should be mine. That was my suggestion about an hour ago. So I'm just, we're all over the place in the four elementary districts and what we pay for this. It makes it complicated and makes it difficult in some cases to get people. And so we're just, we're just recommending standardizing it in all the elementary districts. Yeah, but our meetings are much shorter, aren't they, Bill?
No. No, they are not. Good point, Tom. We might want to adjust it even higher.
We have to go up to Hampton Falls rates now?
Or beyond.
They're already higher than you.
I know. We can't lowball the, we got to go up to the highest one, right?
So Matt, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So is that also going to be, the admin's going to change it, and then the board, the board will just, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's an administration proposal. Or maybe can we change that to Bill Lupini proposed?
Yes, we can.
All right. Any questions in regard to this change? All right, so that brings us to staffing. So we had some fairly robust conversations in regard to our teacher staffing levels. We had this, we discussed the, the range of, oops, sorry. We discussed the range of of potential enrollment. So this, this is a difficult year, as you all know. You know, we were planning on doing enrollment projections, but when, you know, due to the pandemic, that, that kind of eliminated that option. And we have, we have a high number of students, or we have a portion of students that are, you know, homeschooling, that have indicated that they plan on returning to school. So we've done a fair amount of legwork to identify those students. And, you know, Susan and her team have done a really nice job of reaching out to them to get an indication as to, you know, who will be returning. You know, in kindergarten and first grade is particularly difficult. I mean, kindergarten is hard on any given year. But this, this year, there's an uncertainty as to whether those returning students will be going into kindergarten or going into first grade, where their families will be putting them. And then we have the whole element of learning loss. You know, when we look at, when we look at our benchmarks, you know, I, I, I don't want to get too specific, but, you know, we, we have some reading benchmarks where we have, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 50, 50 and 70% below benchmark on, on kindergarten and first grade this year. I'm not sure which one is which. So it's, it's a, it's a challenge we're facing, and it's something that we're going to have to, you know, as we mentioned last, last time. You know, we, you know, evidence, or the, the research indicates that when, when faced with an interruption to education, that, you know, it's, there's a, there's, there's a significant impact on student learning. And that can often take two years before we can rectify that if we take the proper measures. And one of those measures is lower class sizes. And, and this, this team feels strongly that, that we'd really be servicing these students most effectively by, by providing lower class sizes and addressing, you know, some of these, some of these, these issues that students are facing via the interruption in schooling. That being said, when we look at these student ranges, it's, it's hard to justify the number of teachers we have based, you know, depending on what the enrollment numbers come in. And I think Tom had a great idea as far as, you know, looking at the potential range. And, and what we are suggesting as an administration is we reduce our teachers from 22 to 21, but make a note in the budget, very clear, that should our enrollment projection, our actual enrollments that we see next year increase to the higher side of the range, where we are, you know, where we, where we, we could justify an additional teacher, that we would go ahead and hire an additional teacher that we bring forth to the, obviously, we bring forth to the school board a proposal based on the enrollments. And in conjunction with that, I would, we propose remove, eliminating that health insurance under budgeting by $85,000 to allow us that budget flexibility to be able to do that should the enrollments come in. So that's, that is what we are suggesting, and we, we'd love to hear your perspective.
So Matt, just to clarify, reducing from, we do, that one reduction is the elimination of that vacant position, correct?
So it's a currently a vacant position. Because that's, you know, even though it's a vacant, there is a concern like about morale as far as the perception to teachers that we're reducing, even though we're not actually reducing a person. So I, I think it's important that we, that we present this as a, as a, we're, we're staffing based on enrollment. We're going to, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're not going to fill that position, or we're not going to budget for that position. But, you know, if, if the enrollments come in higher than expected, then we will, we, we do intend to hire the position.
I, so I, I agree that if enrollment comes in higher, we need to hire more students, whether it's this year or any year. What I'm having a hard, and I think that's a, that's the right message for our students in our community, right? So if we had a whole bunch of people move into town or whatever, and we had to hire more, we need to hire more in order to abide by the policy. Candidly, I have a hard time playing it both ways, though. Where we say if we're, if we have less, fewer students, that we don't adjust our staffing based upon the fact that we have fewer students.
We're not playing it both ways, Tom. That's exactly what we did this year.
We did that.
We did that.
I'm just saying, well, we were just, there was just a conversation about morale, and if we, if we eliminated a, a, a position that it could have an effect on morale. I, I just, I think we have to get, we have to be real about it, but we have to get past it. When I did the math in adding up the, the teachers and the class sizes, you know, I look at pre-K makes sense. Kindergarten makes sense at three. First grade, I think the number's two, even at the high level, right? That's, that's not two or three, it's two. Second grade makes sense at three, but third and fourth grade, when you do the math, I guess you can make the argument at fourth that at forty-one, you might need three, but I look at both of those as really two. And then middle school, but the number's twenty, twenty-one, right? When you add, when you add them all up.
So Tom, without getting into specifics of the numbers, can I, I just say, I think you are in the process of getting past it. Okay. But I think, but I don't think you're past it. I mean, respectfully, I want to say that there's a history here, which while it's been overcome in some ways over the last number of years, it's not overcome. And so I think that, I don't see this trying to have it both ways. And this year, we didn't fill a position that we had in the budget because the numbers justify it. This is a way of suggesting that the numbers are very, are more fluid this year. We've had this conversation in couple of other districts as well, where the numbers are just fluid to the point where I think being very public about a strategy that we would employ should the numbers come in above those numbers because homeschoolers come back or people who didn't register their kids for kindergarten and now come to kindergarten, whatever it may be, which is probably not going to be move-ins, it's probably going to be more in that kind of a churn. But this is a strategy that we might have to employ, but that we're going to be very public about it if we do.
Yep. I, I don't, I don't disagree with if we need to hire more teachers, we need to hire more teachers. And I don't disagree with the fact that we have, that it's a state of flux and that there's, there are some unknowns and we need to be flexible with that. And that's part of the reason I said, hey, let's look at a high-low strategy. And and I understand we're not into that, but in a, if all things being equal, if we looked at the numbers, and I'm just talking about the numbers.
Yep.
Numbers come in at twenty-one. Not, that's what they come in at, right?
Yep.
And, and that's what I'm putting on the table is that when I, we're, we're, we're going off of policy in at least one or two grades, maybe three, right? And if potentially, and if we are, then that's worth a conversation.
Right.
And I shared that upfront, you know, last week, whatever meeting, I said, hey, if we're going, if we're deviating from policy, let's make sure we have the, the reasons around why.
So if we look at our classroom configuration, it still calls for three kindergarten teachers and based on the number, the projection, that's probably what needs to happen to keep us within policy. So one of the, one of the teachers in either third or fourth grade, I'm assuming will move down into that kindergarten level. And then that will create at least in the third grade, let's say at thirty-nine students originally proposed three teachers and that put us well under our school board policy. So one of those shifts that goes to two teachers, that puts us within policy. So we, so we end up just pushing the numbers around with the fourth grade. That's below policy if we treat the middle school sort of separately, because I think there's enough conversation there around the configuration of the school day and the shared teaching in middle school to defend that position. It would be the fourth grade position that would, with three teachers would fall significantly under the school board recommended policy. So I just think we need to defend that position with, with the budget committee when presenting. Yes.
Sorry, just so, I absolutely respect and understand the policy and the reason that it's in place. And I think it's a very generous policy in normal years. My concern and one of the reasons why Susan and I have been such advocates in Asia for protecting the, our, our ratio of teaching staff to students as best we can is that we are in unprecedented times. The policy was not designed for the teaching that we're doing right now. And there was that, for example, Stanford put out a meta-analysis of the learning loss that's happening across the country as a result of COVID. And it's significant, you know, we, as we know from other experiences that we do expect it's going to take years. But beyond that, the level of differentiation that is required, we're seeing it right now, is like nothing we have ever experienced before. Our students are having very inequitable experiences, some of them, over from, from March until now. And what our teachers are needing to do to meet the needs of individual students is beyond we have ever had to do in education. I, I think it's, it's fair to say that. So I think if we've ever been trying to protect our class sizes, it's, it's now. And that's for the benefit of our students for next year and the year to follow. I just think it's going to be a really important thing for other students of North Hampton to, to protect that.
So thank you, Becca. So when you, when you look at it that way, how do we, so I think we have pretty good class sizes to begin with compared to other, other, other districts, not just in our S A U, but in general. When you look at it and there's like one additional teacher that teaching spot that we're talking about, which is going to land in one particular grade, how do you, how, how do you have that conversation about it being in a certain grade versus in all grades? Because aren't we, aren't we kind of playing favorites for that grade versus having somebody that can help out across the board?
Well, I think that, you know, well, the data is going to be really interesting and that's why I'm so thankful for the progress that we've made in the last few years about really being able to identify our students' needs. And you know what, that, that's why we like the flexibility of kind of the way that the board's going with, with the, the teaching number and not necessarily saying it's going to be in this grade and this grade. Um, we won't, we won't know until, I mean, we're doing tier one, tier two, tier three response to intervention with our students right now. And we'll have a better idea as the year goes on and we experience whatever is going to happen this year about where our needs are greatest and where we want to, where, where we need to, to focus and minimize that teacher-student ratios.
So one last thing. Go ahead.
Well, I said one other factor, I think i- in terms of learning loss and learning difference that I think is significant. So we have thirty-eight students in the Remote Learning Academy who are receiving a different experience than the kids who are here in person by their parents' choice. And I think that there are some, while it's, while it's Common Core standards, there are some curricular differences. They're using a different math program than we use. There are going to be some, some assessments and a need for us to, to, you know, get their baseline when they return to us. And I think that's another component of differentiation that has to be taken into consideration as well.
Yeah. So if, if someone told me that, hey, we need to have an extra teacher available in order to help out with intervention and get all of our students up where they need to, need to be. That's a very different strategy from, at least from what I'm hearing, then we need an additional classroom teacher.
But I think the, the other piece of work that may, may be a little bit behind the scenes that's happening currently and that we began last year was really, and I think I spoke to this just a little bit at our last meeting, was really increasing teachers' capacity to provide core instruction that's really top-notch, because the research would show that it's the core instruction that, that really strong core instruction during the course of the day in conjunction with differentiation and intervention when needed is what moves the needle for student achievement that just, like, you know, outsourcing and intervention doesn't necessarily lead to the, the highest levels of student achievement or closing the gap. I mean, I don't know, Becca, if you want to speak to that piece as well. I mean, we're working on, you know, we have professional development that's taken place last year. We're continuing that this year in terms of reading in our elementary grades, particularly K to two. We have one scheduled just in two weeks of virtual training. So I think, I think that work is really, i- is really an integral part of the helping kids close whatever gaps they may come back to us with.
So I think, Becca, your, your, your statement is a good, is a defendable position, right? Like, we are in unprecedented times. And so we don't want to mess with our staffing too much just to hit a school board policy that is designed for the best of times. So I, I, I do think that's a very defendable position. I think it's something that we need to be prepared to present to and are and discuss or argue or defend with the budget committee. Because I think, you know, from a, from a budget bean counter point of view, they might not be looking at it that way. So I think that, that adding a head is probably going to be a difficult pill for them to swallow, but we're sort of past that. But maintaining what we've got and having, having a strong argument for why we're doing it needs to be, we need to have that available should that come up in, in the budget process. So I don't know if it's, I know Matt will be there, obviously Tom will be there. If you two are comfortable speaking to what Becca referenced, or maybe perhaps Sue or Becca would be there as well.
Yeah, I, I'm def- I'm, I'm comfortable with a couple of things. I'm, I'm comfortable saying that we had a robust conversation about it, that we looked at the, the budget very carefully across all positions, not just staffing, that we're not filling one open position, that we don't know how many kids are going to be returning or what kindergarten, first grade enrollment is going to be, and the fact that, you know, our education professionals are talking about the Stanford study and that there's, there's learning loss and we need to make sure that we get our kids caught up and it could be a cost savings over time, right? If we're able to meet our kids where they are and lift them up. I'm comfortable at making that argument in, in, in a really robust way. I did, I also think that it's important that this group has candid conversations about what we're doing and why. And we need to someday get to a place where if we have more students, we're hiring them. And if we have less students, then we don't have the positions, you know, we need to get there eventually. This is not the year. I get it.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and unfortunately, next year could be a more difficult conversation.
And it, part of this is exactly that, Greg. Part of this is exactly that. Just deferring.
In looking at the numbers, that's what, make sure I understand it. If, if we put the budget through as presented originally, we're still coming in about twenty-four thousand dollars less than last year's budget. So we're still showing a decrease over last year's budget for the budget committee. If that helps the argument going forward. But we're, we're definitely less than last year, which is going to be a good thing.
Yeah, we're, we're, so we're, we're proposing a, a, a budget reduction over last year. It's going to come in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under the default budget, which is really an indication of how, how lean this budget is. And further, I mean, I, I know from an actuals perspective, we're not, it's, we're, we're maintaining the staffing, but we're actually reducing a, a teacher. It's not, we're not maintaining on a budget perspective, we're, we're making a reduction. So it's not, so that, that, from an optics perspective, I think the budget committee can will, I, I, I hope that the budget committee sees that we're, we're making every attempt to be fiscally responsible. So this, this budget, Nancy's pulling together the final numbers, but it's, it's essentially going to be that. Where I think we're, Nancy, do you have that, the final? You're on mute.
Hi. Assuming we're keeping the withdrawal from the health trust at the eighty-five thousand that we put in last go-around, leaving that the way it is and making the changes to school board technology and reduction of one vacant position, we are at a negative hundred and nine doll, one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars or negative one point, one seven percent.
Yeah. So what, what I'm suggesting is that we, we do not under-budget health insurance by eighty-five thousand dollars. And that allows us the flexibility.
Put that back.
To add
Yeah.
a teacher. So, so really, that
All right.
be like twenty, it's about essentially what it is now, twenty-four thousand dollar reduction. Nancy, if you have the exact number.
Yeah, I do. I just, let me just go in and change that eighty-five.
So Nan, I mean, Cindy, just, just, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Now it's a negative twenty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars or negative zero point two six percent.
And, and Cindy, what, what we were just discussing as far as health insurance is, so we have a health insurance expendable trust. I think we, we had that in place when, when you were previously on the board. And what that offers us the ability to do is to under-budget our health insurance. So, you know, we receive a guaranteed maximum rate in October, but the actual premium rate isn't, doesn't come through until March. So there's oftentimes, there's not always a differential, but sometimes that comes in lower. So we can kind of hedge a little bit and under-budget. Also, there's, there's staffing changes, a lot, you know, where, where plan, you know, our employees take different elections on benefits. But from a budgeting perspective, we can, we can under-budget that account and then plan on utilizing the expendable trust. And then as we go through the year, if we happen to, if our overall budget can absorb those costs, then, you know, we can, we can, we don't, we don't even have to tap into that expendable trust. But it's a good way to reduce the budget with that, that backstop. So what I'm suggesting is, so we originally proposed reducing health insurance by eighty-five thousand dollars. Now what we're suggesting is to budget based on the health insurance that we know we have today. And then if we do end up needing an extra teacher, then we have that, those available funds that we can, we can utilize.
Makes sense.
So the conversation around needing an extra teacher and leaving ourselves open for an extra teacher, that's a fairly significant increase in student population per grade to, to, to push it to the numbers where we can justify hiring.
Or need, or a need based on COVID and the learning gaps that come in. Right? Isn't that what we're saying?
So, yeah, I think it's hard, it, it's hard to analyze a gap and make a hire within the same year, right? Because it takes time to, to test, it takes time to, to teach for them and then test. Like, is that some, is that, is that as nimble a process as, as that?
We, we benchmark multiple times a year. So in the spring, when we would be doing our hiring for the next year, we'll have a pretty good feel for, for, and grade to grade, what our needs are. So that'll be a result of our spring benchmarking.
This spring's benchmarking. Yep.
Yeah, we'd have to have a conversation around that kind of overall, understand what the, the need is and then go out and find the person and.
We, and we would have to come to you with all that data and proposal before we even started.
Yep.
And we might be flexible in terms of that might not be a classroom teacher, but a swing teacher that goes in and teaches reading or something like that to the lower levels. You guys are leaving options, flexible options open to meet the needs that occur based on COVID and the gaps.
So just for our edification, when we're talking, you mentioned some of the gaps in the earlier grades that you're seeing this year. In these conversations, are we able to separate out middle school from, from K through, K through five? And are we seeing the gaps in middle school?
We don't have the same tools in place for the middle school with reading, which is specifically what we've been talking about. And we haven't analyzed our math data. So we, we didn't want to bring the kids back into the building or starting the school year remotely even. We didn't want to test them right away. And so we've been very cautious in choosing tests that involve the teacher sitting down or assessment, sitting down with the students one-on-one. So they're still developing that rapport and the students feeling comfortable. So we have assessments that we haven't yet performed, because we were waiting until a little bit later in, in the year. So as we have benchmarks available, we can certainly be giving updates to the board across, across different areas. Actually, the assessments to be used K to eight is part of the work that we're doing with Dr. Hobbs.
Okay. So, so from my non educator point, point of view, unfortunately, I would think, I would guess that if there are any gaps, they're, they're more prevalent in the grades that aren't in school being taught one-to-one. Is that a logical assumption?
Not necessarily. It just, it depends on, you know, our older students are, are more independent. And the reason that we've been talking about the, the younger is because the reading assessment was the one that we felt most comfortable beginning our year with, to kind of ground ourselves. And it, it is difficult to learn to read remotely. And so the, the instruction is more effective for the older students. So I don't, I really would be hesitant to speak to any gaps that would result from that right now, because I feel like it's actually going quite well.
Okay.
And then, sorry. I can speak to the difficulty in learning to read at that age. I have a kindergarten and first grader. I can speak to the difficulty in learning to read at that age. I have a kindergarten and first grader. And we've, as a family unit, have had to make significant efforts to 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 work on reading at home. And unfortunately, that's that's where the equity comes into play with families and and whether they have the resources and the capability to provide that extra support. But had, so I can, I look at it personally, and I I feel like my kids are okay, because we're, we have that ability. But if we weren't working so hard at home, they would be, it'd be terrible. It'd be a nightmare, so.
Yeah. Thanks, Matt. That actually segues my next question. Then the gaps you're seeing in the younger, in the earlier grades, are those, are those from the home? The that are at home versus the kids are in school? Like, do you have a breakdown between the the instruction that's happening in school and the and not the instruction, because I know all, I want to, I want this to sound fair. I know all the teachers are working really hard to provide the best level of instruction across the board. But we all recognize that there is a more, a larger advantage to in-person teaching versus not in-person. So are the gaps coming from the not in-person teaching more than the in-person?
The data that we're talking about is K to five, so they're all in the building.
Okay.
So we're, so like, for example, I'm I'm working with the math team right now for the middle school. We're discussing using the SAS interim to gather data for how our math students are doing in the middle school. We don't have that yet. So the data that we have right now that we're looking at, are those are students who are in the building?
Are you assessing kids that are outside of the building?
Yeah, we, that's one of the, that's one of the points we have to make in the RLA is to to pull that data. As Susan said, it's a, it's a group of students where we we really have to focus and collect apples-to-apples data compared with what North Hampton face-to-face kids are getting and see where those gaps are. The second thing that I would worry about is we're looking at trimester transition for a lot of these RLA kids, where they might choose to move from this, the Remote Learning Academy into the face-to-face model. So we just need to keep tabs about in terms of where they are and in terms of what they're producing in terms of benchmarks. Great question.
I I think, can I just speak to one one piece about the reading data? Because I think, you know, if you think of reading as the key that unlocks the door to being able to access content in the upper grades, so so that's, it's so important for our kids to learn to read and have strong reading schools skills by the end of third grade, because the content then ramps up after third grade. And I think that, you know, for kids who have strong reading skills, they they get better, they get they continue to improve their reading just by reading. And so students that have weaker reading skills need need more support to develop the skills that they need to access the information. So it, you know, i- if you think about older students, they typically, i- if they have a disability that requires accommodations or that requires additional supports, they typically have that in place by the time they're in the upper elementary or middle school grades, so that those supports should, in theory, be there to help level that playing field for them. And I I think reading is the thing that levels the playing field for elementary kids. Like, once you can read, you can access everything, basically. And and when you, when you are behind the eight ball in reading, it it just, it, the the domino effect goes into every subject area. I mean, you have to be able to read the directions in your math book. You have to be able to comprehend the language to solve a word problem. I mean, you know, it just, it it has it has far-reaching effects, which is why we focus on that early literacy data and and try to shore those gaps up. And and when we looked at the the primary grades versus the intermediate grades, we saw a bigger bigger gaps in our younger students' reading scores than in our older students' reading scores, who had already developed some some strong reading skills by third grade here. So that our fourth and fifth grade scores, while there are students who have some gaps, there are fewer students with gaps than there are in first and second grade. And I think that's because of, you know, their ability to continue to read outside of school during the closures. Our theory, anyway.
So the, so the gaps that were identified in through the assessment process, is that like at the beginning of the school year, there's an assessment? And 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 is it fair to say that perhaps that gap was created from last spring? Or is the gap happening in the classroom this year?
I mean, I would say, I, my estimation would be that it would be a result of learning loss from typical summer learning loss, because we see some of that every year and compounded by the closure last spring. That would be my my sense. And kids who just didn't have access to the in-person instruction. So, for example, kindergartners that didn't get to finish their kindergarten year and learn all of the phonics skills to the point that would have helped them begin the first first grade year a little further ahead, and the same for second grade. And then in in fourth and fifth grade, we saw fewer students that were struggling. There were definitely students who who probably suffered from the closures. But there were students who didn't, who didn't seem to suffer as much in terms of their reading level.
So one one thing that I would just toss out there, and this may be a this-year thing, if we're seeing learning loss and we're seeing kids that have needs, the class, the schools being dismissed at one o'clock, right? There's a shortened day. One of the things I would encourage you to explore is whether or not we can have EAs or even teachers, even if it's with additional pay, help some of those students after school ends, but before the normal school day would end. That may be an opportunity, right?
Um, for, I can speak on that topic, that we have teachers and EAs that are supporting kiddos after the one-twenty-five end of day. Some of it's part of their services for special education, but others are seeing that 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 need as well.
Yep. Expand it as far as you need to go.
Those are, those are available to 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 parents who feel like their children are are not where they need to be and 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 not just on an IEP.
Well, I will.
Prep time as well.
Ri- right. Right. That that's taken into account as well.
All right, any any other questions around this? Big topic. All right, so Matt, do you want to just quickly summarize kind of where you were landed with staffing?
Yeah, so for for staffing, we are proposing the reduction of one classroom teacher. We're we're going from twenty-two classroom teachers to twenty-one. That the actual grade level will be determined as we have better enrollment projections or actual enrollments, rather. We will be, we do plan to present, you know, in the budget, the, a, we're going to write in that should enrollments increase, we 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 do plan to, you know, add a a position accordingly. Similarly, or not similarly, but due to this change where we're going to be reducing the health insurance, or not reducing, increasing the health insurance by eighty-five thousand dollars to the normal level instead of under-budgeting. And then, just as a recap, the other changes we made was the ten thousand dollars to the technology equipment increase and the hundred and eighty dollars to the Board of Education Recording Secretary. And we have maintained the facilities manager cellphone stipend. We are maintaining the floor stripper and current levels for painting and utensils and the food service. So Nancy, what what's the final number? So we're proposing that the board approve a budget of?
So just one other thing, Greg, you mentioned, not though it wasn't discussed today. Overall staffing, we did reduce three EA positions, too. Just if you were talking overall building staffing, that was another reduction that had already been made.
Yeah, yeah, I I recall we did, we did go through that.
All right. So the number I have is nine million, two ninety-seven, one sixty-one. And that's your operating budget. You have no warrant articles. A reduction of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Can you repeat that number so I can get that accurately in the in the motion?
Nine million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. And those are all admin, so the board agreed with the admin's proposal. There's no change. The board did not reduce or increase any accounts.
Out of curiosity, it it, how does that compare to the default number?
Well, I've got to ask, I've got to confirm with Matt. I believe I'm going to reduce the default by that vacant position also. Is that correct, Matt?
That's correct. So that's going to narrow the gap with the default.
Right, hold on.
Probably going to be like seventy thousand.
So, well, I came up with only fifty-two thousand.
Okay. I was just ballparking it.
That the that the default is fifty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars higher.
So that that's a new law two years ago. With the elimination of any position, the default also drops by that elimination. So previously, the default maintained that previous year's amount.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget in the amount of nine million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. That's recommended by the administration.
I'll second.
Did you get the second, Rhonda? That was Nermina.
Yeah, I have that. I didn't know if you, yeah. Are you ready for the roll call?
Uh, any, I'm sorry, you're right. I missed my cue. Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to everybody for having a robust conversation and and coming prepared to have the, to have the conversation. So thank you.
All right, I think we're ready for a vote.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Greg Dunphy?
Yes.
And Cindy Burke?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you.
Tom and Nermina, just so that you know, we will deliver the budget books to the fire station today for the Budget Committee. They're ready to go once I just change these five pages or so. So, and I've let Jonathan Panett know, because the town books are there today, too, so they should be able to get both of them. Nermina, are you okay with the pages you have, or do you want me to send you the five pages or so that are changing today?
Yeah, go ahead and send those to me, please.
So I will be at the Budget Committee meeting next Monday.
Oh, you will?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I I am, I canceled my trip. I was supposed to go to South Dakota, and I said with COVID.
Come on, Tom. I'll just send all the board members. I think it's eight pages and the new Excel sheet. I'll just send that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I don't think we have any other agenda items. We have no non-public, correct? All right. I think we're finished.
Motion adjourned.
Thanks.
Did you, was that a second, Cindy?
I'll second that.
And is that a unanimous from everybody?
Yes.
Okay. I have that vote recorded, meeting adjourned at ten thirty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, have a good day.